I call this meeting to order on February 7th, 6:00 PM. Meeting of the Pittsburgh School Committee. Ms. Reynolds, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
Surely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which is one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to enter executive session?
I'll make a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of negotiations.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations. All in favor?
Aye.
Show of hands. Thank you. All opposed? Seeing none. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Next on the agenda is election of a vice chair.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Did you all just hear that, election of a vice chair?
I nominate Pete Stevens to be vice chair of the school committee.
Nominations are open, Pete Stevens has been nominated. Anyone second?
Second.
Second. Rosemary, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded to close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed, none. Nominations are closed. Vote on Mr. Stevens as he continuing to be our vice chair of the school committee for the year 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Congratulations, Peter, where are you?
Right here.
Okay.
Thanks, Pete.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, the school committee members, student reports. I have nothing to report right now, resource committee, Peter, who was the resource?
You were. Yes, still are. Resource, we met on 1/13. We talked about the grants or enhanced funds for Century 21, which will be used during this summer. We discussed the crossing guards and that's on for tonight where we are going to continue minimum wage increase, which will be done whenever there is.
Call back, okay?
Eileen Spinney gave us an update on IT. We are working on updating all the network access ports. We are waiting for supplies able to arrive so all the work can be done. Eva gave us an enrollment update. We have 5,367 students in our system and where we have a large third grade of 470 students. And we have had a number of new students all coming from Brazil. Transportation. Donna Hildreth, her student is being affected by the driver shot. We have cut three routes and combined them with other routes, making the buses full. I did ask her if we would be, if we were saving money when we're cutting these bus routes. And we will be. And we are starting the budget process. That was the, Jim, any additional?
No, you covered everything, thank you, Pete.
Rosemary?
Yeah, just make a comment, Pete, when you read, you go off screen, you don't, you're not seeing, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, right.
I'm gonna get new glasses, so sometimes it's hard to read my own notes here.
Even a little more to the, you're right.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There you go, perfect.
All right. Building needs, Mr. Mayor?
You still doing that, Pete?
That was, I will do, I think we're building needs next.
Right.
Yeah. We did meet on 1/13. Craig Shalafu gave us an update on working all the buildings to make sure all the buildings were ready for the cold weather. And that was done, taken care of. School building maintenance position at Crocker Field still remains open. We have not been able to find a qualified person to fill that position. So anybody out there, we're still looking for a Crocker Field maintenance person.
So no one, no one in house currently custodios that, no one wants the job, huh? Really? Wow. That's surprising, that used to be, that was the choice job, wasn't it?
We had three people for 100 years.
That's what they mean.
I know.
Yeah. Wow, okay.
It's a great job.
Yeah, you would think, but wow, okay.
The redistricting is taking place. Mr. Shalafu has been working on that. Trying to look at, we are going to identify furniture that needs to be removed or should be replaced. We don't want to be moving old furniture into the new building if it's not going to be good. At Harrah Updates, we still have many projects coming up. All school building maintenance staff have been trained in the 16-hour Harrah Training. We are working with new plumbers to finally get all the water filtration system from the grant we received. We are still working. Building cold weather checks are working very well and maybe Craig mentioned, we actually save money. Steve, you know, we won't run, Mr. Mayor, we won't run into the problems, hopefully we ran into with Crocker School. So that, that began, that's been working very well, taking care of.
Yeah.
All the final Crocker Field, all the final applications have been done. The clubhouse has been winterized and we have Gale Associates looking at the turf field, what we can do there. Mr. Shalafu has been working with the Crocker MSBA have been been weeding every couple of weeks and that Crocker School is moving along. The accelerated repair projects are moving along. South Street Elementary Accelerated Repair Project is not finished and we're looking for just a little bit with the roof on South Street for them to come back in the good weather to fix it. Building use, buildings are back up and being used. And we've used them by vaccination clinics and the PALS program is running. Any questions? Jim, any additions?
No additions, thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Yep.
Policy Committee, Peter, do we have, do we have a change there?
Policy Committee.
It was Mr. Horgan, I'm not sure.
Mr. Horgan is still, Mr. Horgan is still there.
Okay.
With Ms. Reynolds and the new position who we are going to fill in.
Right, that's coming up, a joint, joint convention, City Council and School Committee, right. Okay, any policy committee information to share?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Any questions? Student support.
Student support is like, student support is going to be, Dr. Knight will chair with Ms. Reynolds and open the new open person.
Okay.
Hello, um, did you, did you call for us? You mentioned student support.
Frank, just a little earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All good, all good. Hold tight.
So.
Is it student support?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in appreciation of Superintendent Jokula for providing me with several invitations to Massachusetts Association of School Committees webinar. And I must say that these were very informative. One particular one was on February the 4th and the presenter was the Executive Director of Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, Dr. Robert Baldwin. During the webinar, he shared some relevant information to me as a new committee member that would assist me in being more effective in my role. One of the things that I jot down here that he said is that school committee member involvement in the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association will position us to be more effective in the area of student support. And as a former track star, track coach and track official, that's close to home. The second thing I jot down here is that he mentioned that there are open seats in some of these interscholastic groups. And he also shared contact information for those of us who were interested in participating in that. And finally, Mr. Mayor, this morning I had my first conference with subcommittee member Rosemary Reynolds. And after I shared the information with her, she expressed interest in attending future mask meetings in order to review pertinent information that may have changed over after COVID-19. And we both agreed that we could work together and participate in some of these meetings so that we can both be more effective in the area of student support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Very nice. Any questions? Thank you. School personnel? Anything to report, we're not sure who's, who's chairing that, Peter, do we know?
No.
Okay. All right, if any of you thinks you're, you're the chair of that, say something or overhold your peace, all right, that's, all right, thank you.
Rest of the committee, the school personnel is the mayor, Mr. Walsh and myself. And for the members that are new, I have been involved in all of the negotiations with, I attend all negotiation meetings representing the school committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Executive Committee, I have nothing to report, student reps. Frank Gallo IV, the fourth? Wow.
Yes.
There were three before you?
Yes, there were three before me.
Are you, who is, is that your grandfather? Like he's my age, he's old, Frank Gallo?
Yes.
Yes, that's your great. Is he? Tell him to come on a hiding and say hi, will you?
Yeah, oh, no, no, that's my, that's my mom.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
We have, we have two student reps tonight, so Frank Gallo IV and Tia Gopal. So this is, their portion of the agenda here, so Frank is, looked like he was running out, but he's coming back.
He wouldn't go get somebody far.
So Frank and Tia, I had the opportunity to meet with them a couple of weeks ago, talk a little bit about what their role is on the school committee and to welcome them personally and the screen and the mic are yours.
Okay. It's going great at Pittsburgh High School right now, our attendance rate has increased significantly. Overall, I'm having a good experience, although there are a few issues of concern. Not, not, not a whole lot, one, we have the issue with the bathrooms, which seems to be reflective of an increase in behavioral issues in our school community. It is, it is valuable for us to have access to the bathrooms at all times. It is somewhat of a, of a concern for most students here that our bathrooms are closed. I've heard quite a few complaints about it and I think that that's something that needs to be resolved in our community. That, that's just the biggest thing that comes to mind at the moment.
Bathrooms are closed?
So our bathrooms are closed during certain, during transitional periods at school between classes. And other times there's like a monitor stationed at each of the bathrooms that you need to sign in with. Now that makes sense, but if the monitor isn't there, it is impossible to get into the bathroom. And due to staffing shortages, it's typically only one or two bathrooms in the entire school that are open for 1,300 students, which is concerning. I think the most bathrooms I've ever seen open was three following this. Now, I understand that it's important that we don't have safety issues in the bathrooms, that we don't have vaping. But I think we need to try to cut the problem up at the systemic level rather than at the surface level. I think we need to try to address the issues that are making us go to the, go to these measures rather than just simply take these measures.
Is this, is this the first time that the administration has heard of your concerns?
Absolutely not, no. Absolutely. We have discussed this at the Student Advisory Council, Mr. Roach has been very receptive to this. And in fact, the Student Advisory Council has been quite effective recently with the whole, our hat, our hat restrictions have been lifted. But this is, this is something of concern that I'm not entirely sure what can be done about it. But I'm, I, perhaps you as the school committee are more familiar with the potential actions that we might take to address the issue at a lower level on the chain at a, like a more systemic level. Yes, Rosemary?
Thank you, Frank, for what you're speaking about. It's, I assume, I can picture what's happening because I understand it's also happening in other schools. And it's a serious issue because it's danger involved and harm involved and people out of control with their behavior involved. I'm going to just suggest that for temporarily, until it gets out of the control, hire extra people. Don't, don't, don't take them away from their other duties, everybody's stretched out. Hire extra people temporarily because you have a temporary problem, hopefully. That's my thought.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, that's a great idea.
Is this, is this something that the student support committee, subcommittee should be dealing with?
Well, I'd love to deal help with that, Frank, and I think, I think Dr. Knight would also.
There you go.
I'm, I'm probably more familiar with it than she is at the moment, but as soon as she gets on board with it, you'll see the seriousness of the issue.
I, I would suggest, I would urge you to have a meeting initially with Principal Roach and get some, gain some understanding of really where the problem or problems lie.
Okay.
Take it from there.
I would love to.
Okay, Mr. Gallo, does that satisfy you?
That, that is an incredible response, thank you so much, Tia.
Thank you. Tia, what do you think about the locked bathrooms with the?
You know, I just think like with the locked bathrooms, I mean, there's like probably some people with situations where they really have to go. I mean, it's kind of crazy, but there's things that have happened, like vaping, like Frank said. Stuff like that. So it's good that we have hallway monitors in the sign out process, but I don't think it should be locked during transition periods. I think there should be like the hallway monitors like there all the time, I think, in my opinion.
Okay. Good. Any other questions from the committee? Or the administration? And you've got more to report, I think, do you not?
Yes, we do, we do have more to report. So I'm not sure if this has changed, but have we begun to allow spectators into basketball games at Pittsburgh High School? I know we allow them for hockey games.
Yes.
We have.
Yes, I think January 29th, the MIA allowed that change and I believe Athletic Director Antassi has implemented that. I'm just asking, looking for confirmation from Mr. Roach and he's nodding his head in confirmation, so get a thumbs up.
Yeah, I think that's great and I think that, that helps build our school community. I've noticed a lot of our student body has really taken to go into these hockey games and really convened there. I typically can't make those, but I think it's really good to have this kind of school spirit. Because one thing I've noticed is there's been a decrease in that kind of Red Raider pride as we've progressed into our junior years. And I think that that, that is, that's something that I'm very happy that we're coming back to. I'm very happy that we have that Red Raider pride. Most of those other things have to, most of the other issues are relatively minor regarding our kind of school pride and they mostly pertain to only Pittsburgh High School. But as a district, I think having events like this is very, very helpful and helps really build a sense of community in Pittsburgh Public Schools that really shows that we are the exceptional school system that we are.
Frank, just a, just a comment. My wife and I go to most of the hockey games and I went up to Cushing Academy the other night and our students were just outstanding. We, we lost two to one in overtime, it was just a wonderful game, both teams ended in a tie, both teams were that good. But our students who were in front of us, they were just outstanding. They really, school spirit is outstanding at Pittsburgh High. And just from tonight, Pittsburgh is winning three to nothing their hockey game right now, so.
That's lovely.
Is that, is that the first loss they've had, Peter?
No, that was their third, but.
Third, okay. Because they were undefeated for a while, right?
Right.
Yeah.
They're 10, they're 10 and 3 and they'll be 11 and 3 after tonight, but I think one of them kind of counts as a tie. But the kids are just really doing a great job.
Okay, good. Are we kind of going back and forth, Tia, you, you have comments to, or information to provide?
Yes, I actually have some information to provide. So as we know, this is February and that means it's Black History Month. So you know, most people are aware of Martin Luther King Day and how important his speech is. Also, there is a new chapter of the FHS chapter, it's the Black Student Union. So at Pittsburgh High, they're, they're offering community opportunities for cultural enrichment, intellectual growth for a diverse student community. And it's not only just black people or anybody of African descent can join, it could be anybody, anybody's can join to learn more about the culture and, you know, spread positivity and get involved with cultural activities. And, and not too long ago, we also had a guest speaker at Pittsburgh High, his name is Charlie Bremen. He was a former UFC fighter and he was there to share his inspiring, inspiring message, message of what it's like to go through hardships and how to get from, how to deal with hardships and how to get to success. So he was very inspiring.
Great. Okay. Questions?
I'm gonna, Tia. A few years back when I was a principal and I hired this young woman, Mrs. Gibbs, as a teacher aide. And she is now a teacher at Rango Elementary School. And she could be a good speaker coming in to teach, talk to the high school kids.
Wow.
Just be super and, and she, and you know what, we've been working our, our teacher aides and trying to become teachers. And Mrs. Gibbs has become, she was a teacher aide and has become a teacher. And the school system has supported her.
Okay.
I do have a comment to make, my cat decided to jump on my keyboard. I, I, I want to make this comment that I had Miss Gibbs when she was a teacher's aide. And I went back to redo her class a couple of months ago and she's an incredible teacher, she lives right next to me. And she's always so nice, so I think that that would be a really awesome experience at Pittsburgh High School to have someone like that teaching. And while we're on the topic of diversity, which is, I think, a really, really important issue. I, we really need to put forward that Pittsburgh is a diverse community and that we want to take pride in that, I think this is a good time for that.
Good. So any, any further student reports, any further student information to impart upon us?
Yes.
Yes.
So we've had pool testing trends. So from January 4th, we had 28 positive pool groups. From January 11th, we had 21 positive pool groups. January 18th, we had 17 positive pool groups. January 25th, we had nine positive pool groups. And recently, February 1st, we had three positive pool groups. So that's a dramatic increase from 21, from 28 positive pool groups to three. That's great. So I think that schools keep wearing masks, you know, to reduce the spread. And also keeping in communication with the school if there's any absences due to COVID.
Questions? Yes. Ms. Reynolds?
Tia, thank you. Have you had any reports of any difficulties following injections or receiving the COVID? Are you keeping track of that?
No, I have not received any information on that.
I, I make a suggestion, I know it's late in the game, but I think that should be added on as well.
I received some information about this several weeks ago, actually at the Student Advisory Council meeting. They have the numbers posted, they're available, but they're not really high. We want to get them to, our goal is to have them at 70, 75%. They're at like 55%. And again, it's difficult to get people to budge on the COVID vaccine, people have very strong opinions, people have very reasons that range from very reasonable to somewhat outlandish for not getting the COVID vaccine. But I think we need to try and promote that the best we can in our school community for the health and wellbeing of all of our students. I, I, I had suggested some, at a Student Advisory Council meeting, that we somehow do a student-led promotion. Because students talking to students, it gives a lot more of a personal touch to it rather than having some far-off government body, it, it, that's, it's difficult to reconcile with the government body. At least more difficult than it is to reconcile with students of your similar background of a similar disposition to you.
Okay. Any questions?
Just want to welcome Tia and Frank to the school committee as student reps and appreciate the reports and look forward to seeing you at all future meetings, thank you very much.
I just, I'd like to make a comment to Tia and to Frank. You don't realize how important you are, just seeing your faces is great. And hearing from the students is great. And, and don't think if you, if you're tempted to miss one day for some, we need you to come, okay? It makes a difference to hear you, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for welcoming us to this committee, it, it's an honor to meet you. You, you're serving your community so honorably right now, thank you.
Great. I guess you all missed my, my, my hand raised.
Oh, yeah, I didn't notice that, I didn't know if it was an accident.
No, that's what I wanted to say.
Just to, just to make, just to make something clear, I recognize people, you don't. I'm gonna tell your father, Ryan, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna tell your father.
Okay.
So I wanted to really say thank you to Tia and Frank and welcome you to the group, I'm new also. And thank you for the work that you're doing and I'm looking forward to be able to work in, to be able to work with both of you. And so you will hear some more from me over at the high school and again, thank you and keep up the good work.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Okay. Moving on. Approval of minutes for the previous school committee meeting of January 3rd, 2022.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Motion made and seconded approved the minutes, all in favor, hands?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the round none, thank you. We have already gone into executive session, is there any communications? Anyone, no, not seeing none. Public comment, is there anyone in, in the queue waiting to make public comment?
No, but did, Dr. Knight, did you have your hand raised?
Not, not again, no.
No. No public comment. Moving into the superintendent's report, Mr. Jokula.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight we have a, a few presentations.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight we have a, a few presentations for the school committee. I'm wondering if we can just go a little bit out of sequence as both Frank and Tia are with us. And if we can talk about the strategic planning survey as that survey was distributed to students and parents at Pittsburgh High School?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mine was me.
Okay, great. So over the last year, as I've spoken to the school committee and as well as other members of the leadership team. We have been undergoing a strategic planning process with the help and assistance of focus schools. Carrie Purcell has been working with the district, also working with Pittsburgh High School and many of our other schools. We're trying to engage student and parent voice, just as you heard from Frank and Tia earlier. We posed a few questions to the community. The questions were really for the entire school community, but we specifically started the survey up at Pittsburgh High School. And we had about a hundred forty responses, about sixty percent students, forty percent parents. And from those survey results, we have a presentation that I'm going to bring up. And I've asked Jeremy Roach to join us here tonight to help us, just guide us, walk us through some of the responses. And these responses are being shared, I guess, in their entirety. We're being very transparent. To try to help make Pittsburgh High School and Pittsburgh Public Schools a better school, but not just Frank and Tia, but for all our students and all our staff. So I guess I, I'm just going to ask Nate, Mr. Glennie, if I have screen sharing abilities here. Currently, I do not.
You should now, Superintendent.
Hey, thank you, Nate. Okay, I'm just advancing to the beginning here. So I'll begin the slideshow again. As I mentioned, this is part of a process to get parental and student voice into the districts, not only present, but really the future. We're not a perfect organization and we are always trying to get better. And we're actively trying to engage students, parents and staff to help us get there. So Jeremy, is it okay if I just pass you the mic and I'll be your slide advancer here?
Yeah, yes, thank you. And thanks for having me. It's great to be here. And so like Superintendent Jokel said, we'll review, I think it's five or six slides that have some summary data charts with respect to four, I think it's four, maybe five prompts that the strategic plan survey requested of parents or students. And it, and, and we had about, it was, I think about sixty, forty in terms of the respondents. So sixty percent student responses and forty parents. So what you have here is our school-wide instructional focus slash mission, which we talk about all the time at Pittsburgh High. And we, we introduce each day with it. We introduce every meeting with this particular slide, whether we're doing a class meeting, faculty meeting. And you know, I think the point of it is to reinforce the, the habits, the student habits and, and life habits that we know are really important to be successful, you know, present, prepared and positive. We've had that for a long time at Pittsburgh High. But then adding in, you know, the, the goals that we have for those, for those sort of transferable academic skills that you know, span every subject area and, and a really important characteristics of a student to be successful in any, in any subject area and certainly as you progress to, you know, the post-secondary experience, which ultimately is what we need to prepare our students for, you know, so communicating and, and thinking critically and effectively are the cornerstone of, of everything that we're trying to do. And as Superintendent Jokel has said, we're working very closely as a, as a team, our, our instructional leadership team, our departments, but also with focus schools and, and our consultant that we work with, Carrie Purcell. So we can move ahead, I think, in the slides to look at some of the information. So yes, we always talk about being the best student school in Massachusetts too. I think the responses have increased a little bit to a little, to somewhat above four, a hundred forty now. But what we tried to do with the strategic plan survey solicited was feedback to help us improve. It was not necessarily designed to, you know, tell us the great things that we're doing, which it did have a little bit of that too. But it was really, every question was what can we do better? How can we improve? Tell us something that we can, you know, work on. You heard a little bit from, from Tia and Frank tonight as well about the bathrooms, you know, and, and some of the things that you know, we're trying to, to address over the, during the school year this year. So I think this particular question, you know, talked about a lot of the things that, you know, students have experienced. You can see that really what's working well is good to see that the vast majority of students are reporting learning. You know, learning experience overall, as well as the sport that they receive in there. And then, you know, there's a lot of slices of other things that are impactful, you know, whether that's the attendance issues that we've had, both teachers and you know, so staff and students, but also, you know, some of the other things. And I think, again, the student report alluded to it a little bit, you know, we've had many more restrictions this year as a result of of course, the things that we have to do to try to maintain safety. So, but again, I think you see a lot of things where there's positives, everything's great, you know, almost half of the responses of, of that we received and that's, that's a positive. You know, great teachers, obviously, that's, we know this, but it's great to get the validation. But also, you know, some of the things that we need to work on. And, and so the bullet points are items that came up a couple of times, maybe twice. Maybe three or four times, depending upon, you know, the open-ended responses. So the surveys would ask for, you know, kind of a, a quantitative, so choose the best, you know, multiple choice selection and then add your feedback as you see fit. And again, you can see some of those things in there that are listed in terms of ideas for how we might be able to improve from, from, you know, the increasing classings, class selections to, you know, whatever, pace of classes to, as Frank and Tia mentioned, you know, the bathroom issue around student safety, you know, the vaping, whatever it might be. So I, I think we could move to the next slide. So this one asked about, you know, what's getting in the way of your, of your success? And again, I, I don't think it's a huge surprise that COVID was the number one response. You know, and, and that, that definitely is, has been a, an issue, you know, I mean, it's, it's impacted everything as we know over the past, really coming up on two years now. But you can see some of the things that, 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 that students, you know, parents noted. Again, the, the, the responses were, there wasn't always a, a feedback loop, you know, that, that was provided. But so when you see a bullet point, it means it came up at least twice. It might just be twice out of a hundred forty, but it doesn't mean that a hundred forty people wrote fear of getting sick. It just means that that came up a number of times in the responses. You can see again, the students talking tonight about the bathroom policy and, and some of the things that are related to that. Whether that's behavior is bullying, you know, a couple of responses were about that. A number of them were about teacher attendance or the staffing issues that we have had this year more than any other year. There's no doubt about it. So again, I think you can see also some of the ideas that, that was, was suggested around, you know, some of the, some of the ways that maybe we could help with tutoring and, and different, you know, ways that we could be a little bit more responsive possibly.
So Jeremy, I guess before we move on here, I'd just like to add on, on the pie chart here where, you know, we talk about the impacts of the pandemic. The short staffing combined with COVID is about, you know, forty-four percent of the response rates.
Yeah.
And that, that has, that's similar to response rates at, at other districts where they have been surveying students and staff. You know, COVID has been a, a huge cloud over public education for the last couple of years and, and we're no exception to that cloud.
Yeah, I, I would say the vast majority of responses had something to do with mentioning COVID as a factor. I mean, probably seventy-five percent of the responses that people wrote, you know, had, had some relationship to the impact of COVID. And keeping in mind that people did this survey, the very first week we returned from, from the holiday break and, and you know, we were, I think, with, with the students, say we had twenty-eight positive pools.
Right, twenty-eight.
Yeah, and it was, we were in the height of the spike, you know, and so people were, the stress level, the anxiety levels, I think, were heightened. In addition, you know, when, when folks were doing this. And so, so I think, you know, it's not surprising that a lot of people, you know, were wrote about that or selected that as a, as an impediment.
Excuse me, can you hear me? Is it possible to take the three pictures off the screen, Jeremy Roach, Robert Jokel, Peter and myself? Cause I can't see the, like the yellow part of, I can't see to my right. Our superintendent, can you move the thing over?
That's a window on your screen, Rosemary. That's a window that you can move on your monitor. That's not a, that's not a window that the superintendent can affect, right? If you're able to change on your screen, so that's, that's on you.
How can I get it off, get us off? There's only four of us left here on the right-hand side and it's.
Place, place, place your, your cursor on, on any one of the pictures. Press the button down on, on your, on your mouse and just move it down.
Thank you. Thank you. Who was brilliant? Who said that? Thank you.
Yeah, it was me. That's why I'm the mayor.
Okay.
Stumble upon it, you know?
Thank you.
Okay.
Ready for the next slide, Jeremy?
Yes, yeah.
All right, thanks. So I think just, yeah.
Sorry.
You know, our, our goal and one of our commitments in our strategic plan is to make sure everyone feels welcome and safe and belonging at school. And also, you know, as I mentioned earlier, what can we do to make students feel more welcome at school? So, mic passed to Jeremy.
Yeah, and, and you know, we take pride in this and, and, and I think the faculty and the students do a great job really of trying to celebrate the differences that bring us together as Pittsburgh High Red Raiders. The, you know, the, the different factors that allow us to, to, to be in the same place together in this education journey that they're experiencing. And, and so the fact that the vast majority felt, feel that they feel welcome is great. But you know, it's not a hundred percent and that's the goal, you know, so I think the, the, as you see, some of the main themes that came up. I think bullying was number one. Three people select, you know, said that, that maybe that's an issue. Now, three out of a hundred forty-one doesn't seem like a lot, but even if it's one, you know, or two or three, that, that's an issue that's very important. And, and, and something that we need to, to try to address. So again, I think that one theme that also came up, I, I think frequently and, and maybe the student reps can talk about this because we have addressed it at the Student Advisory Council at every, I think just about every meeting this, this year is you know, mental health and, and where people are with that and, and how we can try to continue to address that as an important part of the learning experience, as an important part of how we support students and our, and ourselves as educators. Because this year has, these past two years have certainly had an impact there. And any other exacerbated, you know, potential problems that, that were already in effect, but, but certainly are. I think the positive is, is raising awareness around it and, and making sure that it's a topic that we need to consider as important, just like we would with the academic outcomes.
And, and after this presentation, we'll be hearing from Merwan and Pam Rivers on mental health topic that's important.
Yep, I think we can go to the, to the next slide.
Okay.
Yep, so then there was a, a question about, you know, you know, your role and your impact and, you know, what kind of ability you have to have input as a student. And, and again, I think this is a area, you know, where I can do a better job clearly because it's not overwhelmingly blue. Although I'm gonna put a petition in to make sure that in the next slides, that red is the positive and that blue, especially this lemonster-looking blue is, is the negative, but that's a separate topic.
Alternate to gray in future presentations.
Exactly. I think the, again, there's just a, I, I, I would describe it as finding the best ways to communicate the opportunities. So example being, you know, the students at the last Student Advisory Council really emphasized, you gotta use Instagram. You know, your emails are good and Twitter's fine, but you gotta use Instagram. That's the way to get in touch with us. And I've learned some tech, some, they've shown me a few techniques over the past couple of weeks here where I'm tagging more. And I've noticed they immediately get re-forwarded or whatever Instagram's parlance is for that. You know, it's not retweeting, but re-Instagramming, I guess, re-gramming. Because again, it's, it's, the Black Student Union is a perfect example. We started a chapter, students had interest in it. Awesome, we're doing it. You know, we have Student Advisory Council open to any student at any time. There's no elections like other high schools do. Any student is welcome. And we, we actually get, I think, a good turnout with thirty to forty students, but you know, I'd be fine if there were a hundred, you know, and a hundred fifty. I mean, it, it's so, it's that, how do we communicate that we want your input? We want you to be participating. I mean, I think seventy students responded to the survey out of almost thirteen hundred. So again, we want a greater, a greater voice and finding those best ways to do it is important as, as, as a learning thing for me. You know, I was thinking about that, you know, and just listening to them tonight. But then when you look at these types of results and, 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 and know, okay, we gotta find that way that, that students at their level, you know, are, is the best way to communicate the type of messages that, you know, we want to invite them into a conversation about how do we make our school better? How do we make the experience better? How do you give input? They, you know, they mentioned the hats. We, we adjusted our hat rule this year based on students saying, hey, why do we have this rule? It's stupid. You know, can we, can we, can we talk about that? And we did and it's actually worked pretty well. So again, I think some of the things that you can see there are themes you've already heard about, some of the bathroom stuff. You know, whether it's, whether it's the masks, you know, which our kids have actually been really good about. I mean, we need to remind ourselves all the time to do it. But, but I think you can see some of the results now are coming down with, with positive rates and all that. So again, I think it's finding, finding that way to, to connect everybody to the best of our ability. I, I think we can move to the next slide. These are just testimonials. So I've reviewed this with School Improvement Council a couple of weeks back and also shared it out with our community. You know, here's the School Improvement Council slides and in addition to our faculty and, and and again, these, this, these would be examples of some of the responses. So you can take a look at that and, and you can see, you know, the different types of responses that folks had. And I know Superintendent Jokel, myself, a couple of other people have read it through it two or three times to try to again, find some of the themes and find some of the topics that, you know, are, are kind of recurring ideas that, that we know we want to bring back to Student Advisory Council, that we want to bring back to the leadership team of teachers that we want to, you know, share with parents at School Improvement Council. So again, those are some, some different examples of, you know, the ways that, that people might have communicated their own thoughts about some of the questions that they have. And again, I can, we can share this with everybody too.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be sharing it with the school committee and the entire school committee in the morning.
Awesome. I think we can move to the next slide. So open for any questions myself, you know, certainly, you know, it's a work in progress. And I would say it's been, it's been, you know, I, I would, I don't, I, there's nothing, nothing, no shame in saying probably the most challenging year of my professional career, certainly as an administrator. And I think I, it makes me feel old to say it's my twenty-second year as a building admin. But it has been in, in so many different ways. And I think. And I think that's a common thread. That, that students have felt, that parents have felt, that teachers have felt and. You know, so the fact that we are seeing an increase in attendance, that we are, um. Having and the spectators returning was really great. Uh, the first night was actually Lamonster basketball games, which. There, there wasn't a square inch available at the Lamonster Gym. Back, uh, uh, that Friday, a couple of Fridays back, so and, and we're playing them again this Friday, so I know we'll have a lot of kids. At, at Fitchburg High at that, at our field house, so. You know, in addition to different hockey games and other things like that, that, that does make a huge difference. So anyway, I'll stop and if, if, if anyone asks questions, please, glad to try to respond to them.
I think, you know, just one question I would have, uh, is Tia's, uh, I don't know if Frank is still with us. But Tia, if, uh, you have any comments on some of the responses from, from students or, you know, what you saw on the screen?
Um, for I saw, I felt like they needed more support from the tiers from what I saw. I felt like they needed more teachers to be more supportive and a little more understanding.
Which definitely came up too. I mean, that was a, 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 a number of students wrote that, you know, I would say one of the things that. We've, we've, we've walked the line of trying to return to what we would consider to be. A certain level of academic expectations. But also being very considerate of. That, you know, our attendance has been unbelievable, you know, in the sense of students missing five, ten, fifteen, twenty days. Um, example being, you know, we were one of the high schools in our league that chose to do mid-year exams. And, and I know, um, there were some that didn't, some that did. Our, our thought around it was again, you know, we want to make sure that. We do everything we can to prepare our students for some of those post-secondary experiences they're gonna have. And some of the academics expectations that. At Fitchburg High had, especially pre-pandemic and. On the flip side, we also knew this is gonna be tough. It's gonna be a challenge and, and we gotta be super flexible as well, so. I think that's a great point around, you know, it's, it's the, the different perspectives, you know, and, and the student perspective is critical and. And that kind of feedback about, you know, what that type of impact was is important.
Um, Jeremy, um, I noticed, uh, your opening, uh, slide there was, I'm very familiar now with that, uh. You know, be present, prepared and.
Yes, good.
Didn't, didn't you run, didn't you run a co, uh, a contest to see if that was going to be replaced or? Didn't you remember that contest and how did that turn out?
Yeah, we were doing, we're trying still, I think, to, and in fact, on February sixteenth, the students. And staff, uh, during the last block of the day will do an activity. Together about the school-wide instructional focus. And, and it's really, how does this, how does this come to life in our, in our classroom? Um, that's the, I, in a nutshell, what the, uh, activity is about, but. I think, like you said, uh, Rosemary, the, the, we were looking to sloganize it even further.
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah.
But found that present, prepared positive is.
Wonderful.
Just burned into the brain, which is great, you know, because that. That really ultimately is, um, those characteristics are so important and we have spent so much time on that. That we realize that really it's hard to re, it's hard, it. Well, that doesn't make sense.
They're universal and.
Yeah, yeah, and adding in, you know, you've been involved in a lot of those discussions at school council and, and. I think just adding the academic piece is, has been really, um, positive. And now we're looking for that student input around kind of like. All right, tell us like, what is this, what does this mean for us in this class? So that's what we're doing, um, next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Jeremy, this is Jim Walsh. Just a real quick question, can? Can individuals still respond to the survey if they see this now and think I should, I should participate?
Yeah, yes, Jim, good question. My understanding, well, I think so. Uh, I know that when we had captured the data. There were probably about a hundred thirty responses and since then, another ten or twelve have, have responded, so. Um, it's still available and we can continue to, um, send it out, you know, for those who haven't done it yet and. Uh, who would, who would like to?
Thank you. So I think, you know, just to add on. What, uh, Jeremy mentioned about the attendance and Fitchburg High and, and all our schools. Um, have worked really hard over the years, um, to have all our students, uh, come to school. Um, this year, um, as Jeremy said, it's been a very difficult year, not only for. You know, the administrators, but the staff and, and, and students and families as well, um. You know, clearly from the survey results, uh, and survey was, uh. Sent out to students, you know, the week after New Year's. Um, you know, we, we received some direct feedback. Um, there were many, you know, positive suggestions and some things for us to think about to be, you know, to make ourselves better. Um, and we need to have that feedback. Uh, the attendance issue, it's, I've, uh, shared some articles with the school committee, but for the public. Um, you know, chronic absenteeism is a, is an issue this year across the country. That's not just a Fitchburg thing or. I'll say a neighboring community thing here. It's, it's, it's across the state and it's across the country. And, um, you know, historically, the attendance has been a component of the accountability. Um, scale, uh, by the Department of Ed. Um, the Department of Ed has had internal conversations about waiving that and they would need to get a waiver from the federal. Uh, Department of Education, uh, hopefully that goes through considering. The year that we are, we are having, not just in Fitchburg, but across the country. So we'll see if that happens, but regardless, um. You know, the, the attendance is increasing as a, as a function of the, as, as Tia pointed out. Uh, the positive pools decreasing, so there's a, there's an opposite relationship, um. When the pools are positive, the attendance is low and when the pool's low, the low number of pools attendance is high, so. Um, we need to be, everybody needs to be healthy and do what they can to stay healthy and. I remember attending one of the meetings and Frank was there and he said, well. You know, you wonder why we have, uh, our absenteeism numbers are so high as the beginning of the year and. You know, what we're following from D E S I and medical advice is, you don't feel well, stay home. So, um, and that has applied to students and our staff, so. That, that has shown up in, in the student absenteeism, some numbers and also, um. In, in our staff attendance numbers too. Uh, and compounded with the fact that there are still, uh, staff who either. Are pe, potential people who are not interested in working in, in schools at this time. And some people have decided to move on from, from whether it be education or other, other fields. Help the Great Resignation, so. We're dealing with all of that and, um, you know, educating our students every day that the best we can. So, um, again, we wanted to share this information with you all as we continue to. Move forward with the strategic planning process and, um, and we have already shared drafts with you and we're in the refining phases, but we still. Will seek, uh, input to, to make us better, to be a more welcoming and belonging district than one where, where every child can grow and achieve, so. Um. Now, if there are any other additional questions for, for Jeremy? For myself on, on the strategic planning survey? Jeremy and Tia, thanks for, for answering here. Uh, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda here.
Thank you.
Yeah. To the, um. Trying to exit. To the Adult Language Learner Certificate Presentation. So tonight we have, uh, Eva Kelly and Luisa Fernandez. To, uh, talk about the program that now we've been running for about a year. Um, and the highlights of that, and we actually have, uh, at least, I think, one parent, uh, on the line tonight with us, so. Um, Eva and Luisa, the, uh, the mic and the screen are yours.
Great, so just real quick, we just wanted to express our thanks to all of you for supporting this program. We started this right before the pandemic with one teacher and about twenty. Participants and it's grown and expanded under Luisa's care. And, um, work to recruit, uh, people and we just added another teacher. We now have three. Sessions running. We have a formalized curriculum for these parents. And it's just a wonderful thing. It's a really heartwarming thing. Luis, I'm gonna pass it to Luisa. She, um, has some parents that she'd like to introduce.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, yeah, one more time, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. To do this is, I think it's a great way to connect with our families. And definitely they feel welcome in the way that I feel welcome. So, yeah, we, uh, I wanna share some numbers with you before, um, you know, I, I introduce a parent. Uh, so in our first session, we enrolled seven to people and just twenty-five got certificates because, you know. Um, they are working, they change, uh, their schedules and, you know, uh, it was maybe too much. So then in the, in the, in the third one, we have eighty-five people enroll and we passed thirty-one certificates. In our, uh, last session, we, a session, we enrolled ninety parents and forty-five received certificates. And for this session, we already enroll a hundred parents, so a hundred parents are gonna be part of this program, hopefully. Uh, we are passing the books already in the office and, well, we are very proud about this project. So I don't know if Rosarito is here.
Yes, I am.
So Rosarito is one of our students and she got, uh, an special, um, um. Certificate because she was one of our star students. She has been part of our, uh, um, program. Since the session, I think, number three or two and she's amazing, so I'm gonna let her express how she feels about the program. And her experience.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Rosarito. I think it says Luisa, so I, I'm kind of Luisa this night. So, um, come out like that, I don't know. Um, but yeah, I've been since the very beginning, I think, I don't remember. When I started, but the thing that I remember the most is the amazing experience. It's been. Like a family, it's a place not just to. To learn English. We become family and because we have a lot of things in common. And I feel proud of the program. I need to say how. Great I feel with all that because it's amazing when you have the opportunity to work and like I said before to Luisa. Um. Feels great that in some point people say, what are you doing with your English? Because. You came with a little bit of knowledge, but you're doing better every time that I talk to you. Which makes me feel proud of myself, proud of all the sacrifice. After a whole day of working and then we take this time to, to. Have the class and learn a little bit more and become better and better on the language and. It's a very great opportunity and it's amazing. I love that and. Um, every time that I have the opportunity to talk to someone, I said. Um, the Fitchburg Public Schools have this tool to help you to. I feel welcome. My son feels welcome. He loves his school and his teachers and. He feels not anymore like he used to feel when we were in our country sadly. But he said, now I feel better. I'm able to just wake up and, I mean, I feel, um. I feel tired, but I feel okay to go to school now, which I feel it's great because for us it's been a, a huge. Um, sacrifice, a huge, um, change. But, and the, in the other hand, we have this opportunity to, to be better, to be part of. And I just have to say thank you all for all the things that you're doing for us.
Thank you, Rosita.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosarito. And, uh, before, Rosarito. Uh, before, uh, we finish, um, I wanna share, um, that our goal with this program is to. Uh, open opportunities for our parents. Actually, uh, we have a couple of them already working for the district. And yeah, that's our goal, that they, that they become part of our, our community and our district.
And, and just to, to, the success of this program has inspired us to apply for the Adult Educational Services Planning Grant. To see if we can expand and offer more, uh, programs for our families, um. So we're really excited about that too, so maybe we can offer more for them and they've already expressed interest in different courses, right, Luisa? At our last LPAC meeting and this all came out of our LPAC meeting where we had, we asked parents, what do they need? What do they want? How can we support them? So it's the work we're supposed to be doing, so thank you, everyone.
Just like to make a comment that that warms my heart. This great human, yeah, very nice. And look at the smiles on, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
This is Jim, I, I just like to add, I'm, I'm glad that Tia is still on the, with us at the meeting when she talked about. The motivational speaker who came from the former UFC fighter. I, I, I think we have an excellent example of a motivational speaker right here that would be a great. Person or persons from this program. Talk to students not only at the high school, but at, at middle school and possibly elementary school. I think it's a, a wonderful thing. That, uh, Eva and Luisa and your people are doing and it's obvious from Rosarita that it's success. It's important and, and they love doing it. And the fact that there are people who are in this program, who are now employed by the district. Says so much for what being enrolled in this program can do for an individual and their family. Thank you very much, everybody.
Luisa and Eva know, uh. We just had a graduation ceremony, was it last week? Where, uh. Mister Thompson and I were, uh, in attendance virtually. And even though it was virtual, uh, the amount of joy was as high as it was in person last summer. The only thing missing was the great food. Uh, but the, everybody was so excited and happy. And, um, you know, as, as Luisa and Rosarita said, uh, the sense of community and family, uh, in the group was just. Fantastic and, uh, so, so honored that we're able to provide a, a service to. The parents of our students and, you know, it benefits some of the parents, but our students and, and makes the community stronger in itself, so, thank you. So, um, moving on back to the agenda, we're going to have, uh, Pam Rivers and Rowan Demans talk about the. Signs of Suicide Presentation or have a presentation on the signs of suicide. Uh, shifting gears a little bit, so, um.
All right, um, thank you, Superintendent Jokula. Um, as you heard, my name is Pamela Rivers. The Director of Nursing and Health Services for the Fitchburg School District. And Rowan was joining me this evening to present, um, our speakers on this program. Uh, unfortunately, she had a lot of connectivity issues and is unable to join, so I will just share with you this evening. So a little bit of a timeline. The Attorney General's Office in conjunction with the Sandy Hook Promise School Safety Programs. Reached out to us through the community and along with Jean LaBelle Pierce, our former school committee member. Back in December of two thousand eighteen, I had a student support meeting in regards to the need for this. Um, the program was under the umbrella. Of knowing the signs that had four separate focuses. The first focus was to start with hello. And that was a program that teaches the elementary school children the meaning and importance of inclusion and compassion for others. Followed by Say Something, which teaches students specifically in grades six through twelve. How to recognize the signs of someone who may be considering hurting themselves or others and to tell a trusted adult. Or report it anonymously through Say Something Anonymous Reporting System, um, or the Say Something App. The third, um, arm of this was the Safety Assessment Intervention. It was a training that was provided by the Sandy Hook Promise Program that taught school staff and community organizations how to identify, assess, respond. To threatening behaviors before they escalate further into some violence. And the last leg, the fourth leg is the Signs of Suicide, which is a training for students and adults about the warning signs. Of youth suicide and how to intervene before violence or self, um, occur. So moving forward with this, the Attorney Generals, um. Reached out again to us, um, in the violence prevention and meant this. reached out again to us in the Violence Prevention and this Mental Health Opportunity. In fiscal year twenty, this program definitely aligned to the district's initiatives around social emotional learning, bullying prevention intervention, and school safety planning. Moving forward in June of 2019, is the memorandum of understanding between our mayor, our superintendent, and the Attorney General's Office. And it was signed on to the Stopping Act grant in partnership with the, the Attorney General's Office. So we followed with the Say Something assemblies for our sixth through twelfth graders. Those happened in the early part of January 2020. Following those assemblies was the next steps in the end of January 2020, which was the final program that we're going to be presenting on tonight, the Signs of Suicide. Unfortunately, as we all know, March 2020 happened in this program, like many others, were halted. The Attorney's General's Office continued with newsletters and resources around the topic and information. They reached back out to schools in June of 2021, looking for signs of suicide facilitators. They updated in September of 2021 with the different updates to the grant program. And this school year, November second, 2021, they reached out to the schools with the training program that led to, for school leaders and information. And with us this evening are those that participated in the training and have further information to share with you. And that would be Susan Doyle and Elizabeth Rice. Thank you both for being here and presenting.
Good evening, Noel. I'm happy to be here with you and share a little information about SOS, Signs of Suicide. As I was watching Principal Roach's presentation and he highlighted that there were suggestions for improvement in mental health awareness. And this is a program that really will help us with that. So I'm just gonna go over a PowerPoint with you quickly, give you a little bit of information. Craig Shalafou has met with people, represent, representatives from each school who are willing to be trained and to start this work. So our learning objectives, if we can move a slide here.
Can everyone see the presentation?
It still says mind what? It said, to me, it says mind wise. Is that the page you're on, Craig? There you go. So, so this is the learning objectives for the training team. We are prepared to advocate for suicide prevention, to deliver evidence-based suicide prevention training to students, to train our faculty and our staff, and to engage our parents. All stakeholders are really important in this work. Next slide, Craig. So there's real prevalence of youth depression and suicide. The statistics on this slide are from 2019, but I, I have some more updated information for you as well. The number of twelve to seventeen-year-olds during, in this, at that time period in 2019, reporting a major depressive episode in the last year more than doubled between 2005 and 2017. Just, I think with the, what we're seeing in schools with our COVID epidemic is these numbers are, are, have gone through the roof. Just in between March and October of 2020 alone, the emergency room, mental health visits increased by thirty-one percent. And a hundred and forty thousand children in the United States have lost a caregiver due to the COVID pandemic, with our racially diverse families being at a four and a half percent higher risk. So the, the loss for our students is enormous. I can speak, I, I'm a adjustment counselor. I run a small program called the Bright Program for kids who are suicidal or have been hospitalized for suicidality. And I can tell you of quite a few families that are directly impacted with immediate family numbers due to COVID. Fifty percent of children with a diagnosable mental health disorder do not receive needed treatment. And what that often looks like in our schools are kids who present with behavioral issues. But very often that's undiagnosed mental health issues that are going on, that nobody's treating them for, and they kind of run amok. While pediatric emergency department visits have been stable between 2007 and 2016, visits for deliberate self-harm increased three hundred and twenty-nine percent. Yeah, enormous numbers. So for those who aren't familiar with self-harming, what kids do or what people do is they change, try to change emotional pain into physical pain. And the highest number of people who self-harm do it by scratching or cutting and then head banging and hitting, as well as burning and ingesting things that will harm themselves. So those numbers are, are really high. We're all seeing that across the district in the middle and the high schools at pretty high rates. Next slide. So this is suicide risk for kids ages ten to fourteen. So if you look at our bottom line, it's kids who, deaths between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and fourteen of kids who were killed by homicide. And it has stayed relatively straight with a, a little decrease as the, as the years came on. At the very top, you'll see it's motor vehicle accidents. And I think the, the push from nineteen ninety-nine to fourteen of seatbelts, we see a sharp decline in the number of children who die from motor vehicle accidents. But the double line there in the middle, that's suicide. And as you look at it, you can see we had a little dip around two thousand seven, two thousand eight, but since two thousand nine, we're just steadily climbing. According to the CDC, in 2019, suicide was the second leading cause of death in the same age category, children ten to fourteen years old. And now in this time during COVID in 2020, there was a twenty-two point three percent spike in ER visits for suicidality compared to 2019, twenty-two percent higher than the year before. And in, within that twenty-two point three percent, fifty percent increase in the number of girls who are now trying to kill themselves. So we can see it's a real epidemic of its own. Next slide, Craig. So there is, you know, this is, we ask you true or false, i- i- if people, often people think that talking to youth about suicide is risky because we're putting the idea in their heads. And we know that this is false. Suicidal thoughts and behavior come from a complicated mix of risk factors and cannot be suggested by a simple conversation or a lesson in school. And in fact, if a teen is struggling with suicidal thoughts, we won't increase those thoughts by encouraging them to talk. The opposite is actually true. Bringing up the subject of suicide and discussing it openly is one of the most helpful things we can do. It decreases that rumination. It gets it outside of them. And, and once they have a trusted adult, they can start to work through it. So SOS, Signs of Suicide, it's a universal program that's appropriate for all students. And in a randomized controlled trial, students receiving the SOS program reported more favorable attributes towards getting help for themselves or friends. What it reminds me of is we often do anti-bullying types of programs for our kids. And we talk about the bystanders role, the kids that are standing there and what they can do. And one of the things we always say to them is to get to adult. And after we do these presentations, we see such an increase of kids coming and saying, so-and-so is bullying so-and-so. I saw so-and-so not being nice to so-and-so. And it allows us as staff to get in there and work even harder with the kids around this. It's the same with suicidality. When kids know that there's a protocol, they know who to go to. They're much more apt to come and get help for themselves and their friends. It's especially valuable for students who are already struggling, struggling. The research has shown that it may interrupt progress from suicidal thoughts to attempts, helping those who are already at high risk. And following the end of the program, students were, I, I hate the way this word is worded, but what I believe it to say is that they report that they were sixty-four percent less likely to attempt suicide. That they knew that there was, then a control group, they knew that there is help out there for them. So the goal, our goal is to prevent youth suicide, to increase our knowledge and adaptive attitudes about depression, to encourage individual help-seeking and help-seeking for friends, and to reduce the stigma. The mental health stigma is still very well alive and present. But like physical illness, it requires treatment. We really want to engage our parents, our faculty, and our school staff as partners in prevention and encourage schools to develop more community-based partnerships. I can tell you at the Longchamp Middle School, we have a lot of partnerships. We have multiple agencies who come in and provide services for us, individual therapy for kids in need. But we could, there's always room for growth and improvement. So I know there's a lot of community agencies would be very willing to partner with us on this really important initiative. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Susan Doyle, a clinical interventionist from Fitchburg High School.
How's that? Better? Thank you. It's very nice to be with you all tonight to talk about this very important subject. We, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the program itself. So if you could go to the next slide, Craig. So we are off, but I, I think we've missed one, maybe. Okay, I'm gonna, I will talk about it anyway. There are two main components to the program. There's a series of three videos that range from five to eight minutes in length. And then there's a guided discussion following that, that is outlined for the teachers. And then at the end of that, there's a mental health screening. And that includes a one-word or a one, one-question phrase that just asks whether or not they need to talk with someone. And then also there is a screening tool that's, that we'll talk a little bit more about as we go on. You can change, I, I'm gonna actually have you leave that. So this is the, the screening tool. It's called a student response slip. And it, it's saying, I need to talk to someone about myself or a friend, or I do not need to talk to someone about myself or a friend. And the students will fill that out at the end of the presentation. And we will get back to them within a reasonable amount of time. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so one of the things that we will be, one of the concerns is that, you know, do we have enough help to be able to follow through with, with meeting up with students afterwards? And yes, we do. There are five clinical interventionists now at the high school. I am very happy to report. And we look forward to helping students with this. There is about a thirteen to fourteen percent return rate asking for some assistance, according to their statistics. So, and this talks about the brief screening tool that we have for adolescent depression. Students are asked to fill out, I think it's seven questions. It will give some things like, have you felt like nothing is fun for you? And are you just not interested in anything? Has doing even little things made you feel really tired? Have you thought seriously about killing yourself? It also asks if they have actually tried to kill themselves. And there are several other questions about the depressive symptoms. You can move forward, Craig. So in order to plan for this program and getting it ready for the community, too, is we want to connect with mental health facilities. We are partnering with many of them. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of room at the high school at this point to have many clinicians coming in. But we, we will be contacting mental health facilities and we do partner with them. We have telehealth available for students within, with several agencies. So that's also available. We are creating a referral resource list for parents. So that if they hear about this from their children, that, that they can reach out and refer them, their, their kids for services. And we want to, we will be very prepared for any students who do come forward and need to talk about this. Okay, next slide. Screening for possible suicide behavior in students presents a variety of logistical challenges. But the fact remains that the student screening likely represents the most direct and efficient way to identify potentially suicidal youth. And it's a very critically important part of any public health approach to school-based suicide prevention. Next. So we will be training staff in the school. And you can go to the next slide, Craig. Then we will be hosting a couple of meetings for parents to come in and get some information about the program itself and give us a chance to interact with families on a different level and answer questions that they have. Next. So why do we engage parents? Well, we're finding with some of these surveys that have been done, of a survey of more than five thousand teen and parent pairs that over, let's see, hold on, that over four hundred teens have reported having thoughts of suicide. And only about half of those teen parents reported that they knew that their child had thoughts of suicide. So there's a big gap between what parents know and, and how much kids don't talk about it necessarily with, with parents and loved ones. So we must work together as a team to try to identify as many students and children as we can and to help them and get them hooked into services. Next. So this is just some of the national resources that are available. We also, at the local level, have a number of counseling agencies. And specifically, we have the Stop It app where anything can be reported anonymously, which is great. And the other thing is that we have Mobile Crisis Team that can help with any kind of referrals that are open twenty-four seven and provide screenings for hospitalization, as well as getting kids hooked into services. So. And I think you can do the next one, but I think we're at the end and it's just resources. Yeah. So we'd like to open it up for questions.
Let me see. Sue?
Yes.
I just have a comment. Is this, this is the fruit of the work of the people in Connecticut that had that terrible?
Yes, it is.
It just sounds so solid to me. It sounds really like caring, thoughtful, educated, deep possibility for us, you know, adults, how to reach out and think about all of this. Yeah.
Absolutely. Actually, I was in a school mental health conference this weekend. And it actually was highlighted as one of the evidence-based suicides. suicide prevention programs in the area.
I would like to get involved with you somehow. I don't know, just to support or talk or pray or whatever. But can you be reached or how do I reach you?
Absolutely. You can contact me at the high school.
Yeah, because of, okay. Good.
Extension two five nine.
Maybe our little group can be very active with you. Thank you.
Would love to speak with you.
So, so I saw in there, people, insurance. What do we do for the students who do not have insurance or the means of support to get a referral to get help?
Well, sometimes we take them on at school and provide services there. Usually kids are hooked in with Medicaid because of the Affordable Care Act, so that there have to be some mental health services provided there.
There's also many agencies in our community that help people who don't have insurance and can get their insurance hooked up pretty quickly. Everybody is eligible for Mass Health. So there's the Family Resource Center, there's Community Connections. We have a lot of agencies in town and we all have, most of us have phone numbers to the, the people who run those places. We're, we're able to help people with that pretty quickly. The, the guidance counselors, the adjustment counselors in the building, we all are pretty good at getting that stuff up and running for people pretty quickly.
I guess I have a question for Sue or Betty or Pam. Can you talk about how the additional clinicians that we've hired over the last year have I guess helped meet the, let's say, the demand or the, the needs of the students?
I can speak. I first came to the district twelve years ago and I was one of three clinical interventionists in the entire system. We upped that to three clinical interventions at the high school last year. And then from there have also added two more. Our caseloads at the beginning of this year were up around sixty kids each, which is not a manageable caseload. So it has been a welcome relief to have finally two more clinical interventionists there, which makes our caseloads much more manageable and we can do the things that we really need to do in order to support students and families.
I'll say at the middle school, we have now two. We had one, we added a second one, which has been wonderful. He's terrific. And, you know, they were able to service. It was the same, the, our one clinical interventionist had a really large caseload that wasn't very manageable. And now her caseload has been split in two so they can do it. I will add a little caveat though, that the need now is there's no room in the ins for the really mentally ill kids. Our ED programs are busting at the seams and there's kids kind of in a queue that need to get in there. So I don't know what we can do, whether there's any potential of opening new classrooms for kids with serious emotional impairment. But I see that as the really pressing need right now.
It's a huge need and I think the other issue that we're facing is that the schools are being asked to be more of a holding environment for a lot of students that are experiencing mental health issues and crises. The, the hospitals are full. There is a major wait for students who are suicidal and need hospitalization and need much more intensive services. So they are being housed at ERs. And then within a, a number of days, a week, two weeks, they might be let go without ever getting services because they've at least decompressed and stabilized a bit on their own. But that's not, that's not the way that we should be doing things.
I've had many kids sit in an ER hallway for fourteen to sixteen days waiting for a bed. There's a real crisis for mental health beds across our country and yeah, so they're, they're boarding kids in hospital hallways. And as Sue said, sometimes they hang on to them and they get a bed and they get the treatment they need. But very often after they've kind of de-escalated a bit, they, they end up sending them home and they don't get the need, they don't get the help that they need. Other than schools, we're really trying to be triage everything.
So some of our students are displaying much more extreme symptoms than we're usually dealing with on an ongoing basis. And we are, I, I know at the high school right now, we have fifteen students that we have safety contracts on that we are trying to stay safe.
In, in, you know, identifying with the crisis, there are different monies and different grants out there. Rowan and I have been pursuing these to bring in, as you've heard about the increased numbers, the clinical interventionist in the schools, the supports that are needed, also in the health offices. But, you know, it's, as you've heard, the, the schools are working very hard to assist with this problem, but there are the greater community needs and, and the awareness that needs to be out there and the support's that way as well. So doing our best to work together and help the children. And, and again, the, the programs, both of these schools, whether it's Long Joe and the high school, have the Bright program. So as the children are in and out, we're trying to have a connection for them so that they have a safe, secure area that they can have needs met in the interim and continue to try to be, you know, grow and become successful.
Additionally, when students are released, when they do get into the hospital, they're being released and there's a six-month wait sometimes for getting mental health services if they haven't already been hooked up with counseling prior to hospitalization. And again, we are having to maintain those students once they're out.
Oh, I know in addition to what Pam just mentioned, you know, I've had several conversations with Michael Kishmerik, who's very active at the State House trying to advocate for funding. And I know there's a pool of funding that they're trying to make available to develop a therapist and social worker pipeline is clearly right now. There isn't a pipeline similar to, you know, public educators. We need to have staff to meet the needs of the community. And that's, that's, that's a big crisis that's happening, you know, across the state and across the country. I know just from a few superintendent forms that I'm involved with, the number one position that they're looking to fill is clinical interventionists. In addition to paraprofessionals, because we're, we're short on that as well. And, you know, I'm sure Sue and Betty and Pam know that late last year, the Surgeon General issued an advisory on the student mental health crisis facing the country. So this is, you know, something that we're all trying to to meet our students' needs and keep them safe and healthy. When, you know, we say that, we mean not just physically, but also mental health as well. So I appreciate what Sue, Betty and all the other clinicians are doing. And it's, you know, I hope, I don't see the tide yet going back out on this one. And, you know, that's one of the things that as we start looking ahead to next year and actually where we're looking at, again, adding probably additional resources, staffing to this, to meet this need. You know, the, the reality is we'll be, you know, competing with every district in our area and across the state for, for those, for that talent. But the need is there and we're gonna, we're gonna work hard to fill it. And, and clearly we've been successful in, in hiring clinicians over the last year or so to help, you know, help our students. So we-
And I don't know if anyone said this, Bob, and I apologize if I'm repeating myself or someone else's thought, but district-wide this past year, we hired twenty, I mean, we hired seven additional clinical interventionists. I mean, now we have twenty district-wide. So it sounds, you know, just talking to Elizabeth and Sue, we need to look at additional support for our students. So thank you, ladies. I appreciate your presentation tonight.
And, and I think, you know, as Jeremy's still with us, Jeremy, I don't know if you can share your experience of having the additional clinical interventionists at Fitchburg High, especially this year?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this at the faculty meeting last Wednesday that, you know, having Sue and Courtney, Rachel, Samantha, Deshane just started with us. Kat Tobin has come aboard. You know, we have more than a hundred sixty students who are meeting with our therapists. I mean, they're essentially therapists in the school and they cannot get them outside of school. I mean, it's like Sue said, six months or never. You know, and kids who are desperately in need, they've just been hospitalized for, you know, mental health situation, issue, whatever. So it's, it's, you know, what is a hundred sixty, twelve percent of our student population and the likely need is, is even more. Because we shared, you know, what we consider to be our tier-three students who, you know, are, you know, showing signs that they're really struggling and they aren't necessarily assigned to, you know, one of the clinicians and, and that was about a hundred sixty as well. So, so it's definitely, you know, I, I know we were just looking at an article in Commonwealth Magazine, which I think is, you know, especially where it's, I think it's Mass Inc. is the, is the main organization that oversees it. It was a mass-centric focus to the article and it really centered on mental health is the crisis issue for teenagers, for students in, in the public school systems across the state right now. So we're not alone. It's, we're, you know, there's nobody immune to this. But I think the, the focus that our district is trying to put on this, because the other thing that we talked about too is we're going to be finally rolling out a true social-emotional learning curriculum through our advisory. And it's purpose prep through edgenuity. We're doing the training this Wednesday with all faculty. There's always logistical challenges with these, so advisory might not be the best way to do it, but we can't wait any longer. Every student needs to build their awareness, build their learning. Like I said, I think what we've, what we know now is that the head and the heart are so intertwined. You know, so if the cognitive and the emotional are going to be addressed by the schools, the outcomes I think will be better, you know, and, and, and so I think it's, it's, we're so fortunate to, that Elizabeth and Sue and, you know, others like Pam, you know, have their, their thumb on the pulse of what's happening. But really, I mean, they're doing a lot of work that isn't happening outside of the schools. So thank God for them, you know, because the, the ability for students and families to find clinicians is exceptionally difficult. Exceptionally, and like Elizabeth said, my son had a knee injury in, right around the holiday break. So we're in the emergency room for about five hours, you know, inside the emergency room in Worcester. And I would say seven of the people in there were probably students from Worcester Public Schools who had been there for days. And they were just sitting on gurneys, not getting any help. And they were there for that exactly. We had been section twelve or, you know, some kind of thing because they, because they're a mental health. And they'd been some, I, I was overhearing them and, you know, they reminded me of students that we work with and, and they'd been there three, four, five days. And that's, that's what we hear all the time. It's all stuff. But yeah, it's great stuff and SOS is an amazing program.
Jeremy, can I just ask, what was the curriculum you guys are, are rolling out at the high school?
Yeah, so Edgenuity, which is our online learning program, I, I know Long Joe uses it as well. And they, they added a pretty robust, because we studied, you know, Jen Scott and another, a number of folks at the high school, looked at a number of different SEL curriculum and found that the purpose prep curriculum part of Edgenuity was really good. So we're actually rolling it out in our advisories within the next, I mean, the plan is to start on February eighteenth, that's our next advisory. And, and the teachers are gonna have training on how to use it and what's available to it this coming Wednesday at the early release day. But it's called Purpose Prep and it's, we have it, it's there. You know, we're all, because we have Edgenuity in the districts, put the investment into that, it's available. So I'll, I'll send the, the flyer to you, Elizabeth, if you want to look, because there's like fifty some odd modules on all kinds of different topics.
That's terrific.
And just in closing, just to, I want to thank Pam and Sue and Elizabeth for taking the lead on this. They are the spokespeople for a team of fifteen or seventeen of our guidance, adjustment counselors and clinical interventionists who'll be rolling this out at our middle schools. This is a grade six to twelve program. So it'll be middle and high schools that'll be rolling this out soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, babe. So moving on the agenda, we have just a chapter seventy budget update. I've asked Craig to put together a brief summary. The governor just announced his budget a little over a week or so ago. That incorporates the Student Opportunity Act funding. So Craig, if you can just kind of give the high-level summary of what it looks like and-
Just confirm that everyone can see my screen, FY twenty-three budget?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, excellent. So I just want to start off real quick tonight, just to go back and, and cover as we do and we start this budget process of our call to the work that we do in district each and every day. And that's our commitment to taking down barriers so that we can provide personal growth and achievement opportunities. And so students can be ready to learn for high-quality core instruction, social, emotional supports. And then the four tenants that we discussed so much last year, and we want to just reiterate, the curriculum that is accessible to and reflective of all of our students, the tiered system of academic and social-emotional support district-wide, staff development in a diversity recruitment plan, and then a sense of welcoming and belonging for students, parents, staff and all members of our community. And just a, a really quick summary, remember the Student Opportunity Act that, you know, we've discussed so much over the last two years. You know, it's a one-point-five-billion-dollar initiative from the state and that's over a seven-year period. And really looking at increase, in increase in spending for guidance psychological services and expanding that into social and emotional learning, as we just heard from our clinicians, that is, is so important. Looks at redefining what we consider to be low-income students, how that is, how that is referenced in, in characterized in our foundation budget. And then the reimbursement rates for students who have no fathers or mothers, guardians who are living in the Commonwealth and, and addressing them in the category of socially, socio-economically disadvantaged students. So it's increasing that, that the group of students who qualify for increased funding. Also, looking at our English language learners, particularly with the high school age students and receiving the higher funding because of their needs. And then special education, just funding special education in a way that is more reflective of the students that we have in our schools, increasing the circuit breaker. And then there's also a part of it that is addressing the implementation of charter school reimbursement. So these are the main foundational pieces of the Student Opportunity Act. We have to turn the chart back a little bit here to pre-COVID and then as we went through our pandemic years, if we all, none of us want to really go back and remember the beginning, but that first year when we were in one-twelfth budgets, there really was no budget here in the state. That was the first year that SOA was supposed to be rolled out. We received one million dollar increase in chapter seventy, which was basically a leveled service budget. In year two, which was last year, chapter seventy was increased three and a half million dollars. But if you remember, as we went through last year's budget process, the foundation budget for us, we dropped a hundred and seventy-seven students. So, you know, the foundation budget is based on your enrollment and we had a significant enrollment decline, which impacted the amount of chapter seventy money that we would have received last year. We were hoping that there would be an adjustment made after the initial October first enrollment data, but that never took place. And that's, that was not local, that was statewide. I think it was thirty-five thousand students statewide, kind of fell off the map. And then this year brings us to this year FY twenty-three, we're, we're looking at least in the preliminary governor's budget, a seven million dollar increase in fully funding the Student Opportunity Act. So, you know, we're excited about that. So this is just a, a really brief overview that how the foundation budget is calculated. You can see the, the categories across the top, which shows the number of students that we have, whether it's preschool, full day kindergarten, elementary middle and high school, and how those, each part of the formula is calculated. Which are over on the far right hand, if you go down to the corner, it's our new foundation budget for this year is eighty-eight point eight million dollars. This year's per pupil expenditure is fifteen thousand seven hundred and one dollars per student. And the amount of money that was from the budgets, two point five, there's going towards Ls. And then our low income foundation budget accounts for almost twenty-nine percent of our chapter seventy money. Notable at the, the bottom part of this particular slide that we're at the, we currently have seventy-seven point six percent of our students fall into this low income category. And that's calculated in, in three different categories. So students identified in state public assistance programs. That's SNAP, transitional aid, qualifying for mass health and foster care. There was a secondary supplemental data collection, which basically allows parents to fill out a form, which is very similar to the old friend reduced lunch form. They submit that, which is a proof of their wage or paycheck. And then we can qualify them. It's very difficult, I think, across the district, you know, we were able to capture about five or seven families district wide that actually submitted the paperwork. So that's something that we'll continue to work on. And then for those students who can qualify for homeless and McKinney Vento. So you can see in that lower slide that there's twelve actual category or twelve groups. We fall into group eleven, which puts our, with our low income between seventy and seventy-nine point nine percent. And please feel free, as I go through this, there's a lot of information on some of these slides, and if you have something that pops up, don't hesitate to to give me a call or just ask a question tonight. So I did capture, this is just the far end of that foundation budget with the categories. For our Ls in, in pre-K to five, we have five hundred and eighty-six students. Our Ls in grade six to eight, a hundred and thirty-five, and then our high school, a hundred and sixty-three. And then how that's calculated down to come up with the figures for each subgroup for our Ls. And then our low income out of the five hundred, five thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight students, four thousand one hundred and forty-seven qualify as low income. So again, that, that's, that there's the what qualifies kind of that pre Student Opportunity Act, and this is the real focus between addressing our underserved populations. This is a really quick, you know, a seven year trend. You can see where our foundation budget is that orange line that runs through our chapter seventy is the lower bump, the blue columns, and then across the very top, I highlighted what the changes in our chapter seventy over the last seven years was. And you can see earlier in FY seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, it was, you know, one point seven million to two point four to two point five. And then FY twenty, it jumped to four point three, and then the pandemic hit. And that's when the Student Opportunity Act really kicked in. So again, we're excited here in FY twenty-three and looking at a seven million dollar increase in our chapter seventy funding. And just looking at the comparisons from last year to this year, you know, our enrollment only went up fourteen students. You know, we never, we still have not captured that hundred and seventy-seven that left us two years ago. But we are making some gains here. But our foundation budget, you can see that went from eighty point nine million to eighty-eight point eight. That's a change of seven point eight million, nine, almost ten percent. District contributions are the other part of that equation. That also increased almost a million dollars. And then our chapter seventy-eight, which, which accounts for another seven million. And in those splits between local contributions and chapter seventies typically around seventy-five, twenty-five. This year it's more in seventy-six, twenty, seventy-six and a half, twenty-three and a half range. Again, an important piece to the, the foundation budget is looking at our per pupil expenditure, and you can see how that has increased over time. Our enrollment has stayed fairly steady. But the per pupil expenditure has gone up considerably from a low of in FY seventeen of eleven thousand to fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars this year.
Craig, I have a question.
Yes, Rosemary.
Um, in the previous slide, I, no, I, I try to remember the numbers. So we're getting more, is that a direct, is that a direct result of our being influential in in influencing the people in Boston that we needed more money here because of our income? You know, there, it's been years and years of struggle about distribution in this district. So is, is it the result of that work that people did to?
Yes.
It, it is. In the, in the Student Opportunity Act is was built around trying to solve some of the inequities in state funding. Particularly for the urbans who have a much higher incidence of underserved populations, whether it's our English language learners, higher amount of special education students, and obviously with that, with the high rates of low income that take a lot more services.
So that actually did have a result, because I, I, I remember we felt like we were having it, we were being heard finally or considered, you know? So this is good.
This is a huge step in the right direction, absolutely.
Good, good. Thank you.
So yeah, and just to, to clarify, this is the second of the six years of projected increases under the Student Opportunity Act. So you know, next year, FY twenty-three, we're, we can make a, I don't want to use the term down payment, but we can make progress in terms of having academic, social, emotional supports, mental health supports, extracurricular supports. And the goal is to not only reduce the achievement gap, but also the opportunity gap over time. So having resources as other school districts have had, some of the more affluent school districts helps. Now, now the challenge will be for Fitchburg and, and others is to find the staff.
Find a what?
Staff.
Oh, a staff. I thought you said, okay, good, thank you.
And again, as we look at this year's budget, we want to just kind of do a quick walk through our ESAR in some of the other pandemic relief monies that we've received to the tune of twenty-eight million dollars. And, and this is between the coronavirus relief funds, version one and two, the technology. And then the ESAR one, so those funds have all been, already have been spent. Now we're into ESAR two and ESAR three, and this came up in an earlier conversation that you know, we want to be very sensitive to what we are spending for, particularly for staffing. So that you, when this funding goes away, that we don't end up with a funding cliff and, and cannot afford the future. So we want to do it as quickly as we can, move these positions back into our general funds and kind of future-proof our plans for providing the necessary services for our students. And this, this just speaks to the positions that we added last year, and we heard Sue Doyle and Elizabeth Rice mention the importance of our seven clinical interventionists. So we added seven clinical interventionists. We added L teachers across the district. We've added academic support teachers across the district. And all of these positions were paid out of our ESAR funds, which will be moving back into general again. It was, th- these were estimates one point two eight five. You know, we're closer probably to one point five million dollars that will be moving out of ESAR and back into our general funds. And again, just a review, you know, we've, what we can use ESAR for and what, what we can't. But we're really focusing on a lot of maintenance in building facilities, unit ventilators at Memorial, at Rango, at South Street, air handlers, climate controls, you know, all of the kind of the COVID and pandemic related building upgrades that we're looking at and, and working on roofs and so on and so forth. You know, we, we can use the money to provide targeted assistance for our low income and our Ls, and we've already done that. You know, we can add additional staffing and then our targeted professional development. And then increasing our social emotional supports for our students. And, and again, really being sensitive to looking to use this ESAR money for these one-time purchases versus something that we would not be able to sustain and potentially create a funding cliff at the end of the, the grant. Questions? It's been a long night of presentations.
Yep.
Yes. So the, so this is the
And I will, I will share this out with, with everyone so that, you know, if you have any questions after the fact.
So as, as the budget process works, for those who are familiar with the process or new to the process or maybe just need a reminder, the governor's budget is released at the end of January and really sets the, the baseline for the school budget moving forward later on in the spring, the House and Senate weigh in. In the years past, it's usually been additive to the number that the governor presents. I'm not sure if that'll happen again this year. I mean, the state has been doing well financially. They're able to make commitments, not only for the chapter seventy, but for the circuit breaker reimbursement, which reimburses some special education costs that is also projected to increase. So as we receive more information, we have some work to do as we're finalizing contracts. We only have a couple of contracts left. Looking at how much of the ESAR money will be absorbing into the, now the net school spending or city budget. Seeing how much we have to, more we have available to invest in things like additional clinical interventionists, which, again, just using the ESAR funds. We've increased that number by almost fifty percent. If we're at thirteen percent, thirteen a year ago, we added seven, we're at twenty. So we're trying to put the people in place to help our students. You know, academically, you know, health-wise, mental or physical health, and social emotion. So it's great to have the resources. Now it's, it's time for us to try to get the right people on, on the bus to help us. Dr. Knight? You're on mute.
Um, yes. Craig, one question I do have, what percentage of the city budget is the school budget? Do you have that information close by?
Let's see, that's a question maybe more for the mayor. If it's eighty this year, mayor, and is the city budget a total of about a hundred twenty or a hundred thirty million, somewhere around there?
Total city budget last year was a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. So the definite, the lion's share of the budget is the schools.
Okay.
Uh, probably, I don't know, Craig, what do you think? Sixty, sixty percent of the budget?
Right? That, that, that sounds good. I was just doing some calculation. I was just doing some calculation and I got that amount. I was just wondering if I was a little over, but about, yes, about sixty. Okay, thank you.
It's the, it's the always the most, the most challenging. And then the, certainly the the bulk of the hundred and thirty-four million is the schools. Always, always has been.
Yep, thank you.
And I, I guess just to be clear, what's not included in, in the budget, but will be presented in the spring will be the, the federal entitlement grants, the title one grant, title two A grants, all these federal grants. You know, are a few million dollars, several million dollars in addition, but they, they're not part of the the net school spending budget that really were required to meet from a local, a city and state perspective. So that's supplemental. Rosemary?
Just a comment I'd like to make that for Dr. Knight particularly. But Mayor D. Natali has created an atmosphere of working together and being supportive of the schools, and maybe sometimes even giving the schools a little bit more than they ask for. So keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, a lot of people contribute to that. It's not a, yeah, it's just a I, it, it, it sounds trite, but it, it really is a collaborative, a team effort, so.
But it's a whole general attitude of, of positive.
Yeah. It's important.
Hey, so that's the, the first of several budget updates, and this will be presenting a a calendar through resource subcommittee and also updating the building needs subcommittee on some some capital projects that Craig mentioned that are ESAR funded and otherwise MSBA.
We'll be meeting on February, February seventeenth is our next school building and resource subcommittee meeting.
All right, and Craig, if you can, I guess, just give the school committee an update on where we're at with COVID. We had a little bit of a preview of that from Tia. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that we were, we have some amateur data analysts or epidemiologists in waiting.
Yeah. And again, just confirm that, that presentation is up and you can see it.
It is. Yep.
Okay, excellent. So what I put together
Craig, and Craig, can you hear me?
Yes.
I've got Zoom United. I've, I'm having gone back to school committee yet. I can hear you, but I'm on Zoom, you know, one united app for meetings, phone and chat, on any device.
Okay. I will share these presentations with you, with the whole committee.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I can't see anything now. There's nothing. I mean, I've lost the committee.
We can still see you, Pete, crystal clear.
Oh, you can? Yeah, okay, yeah. All right, I, I can, I can hear everything.
Okay. So I, I put together just a few slides, just to kind of capture where we are with our routine COVID safety checks. And this is formerly the pool testing that we have done and Mary Alexandra Molina has shared data with you consistently. I think that we've tested we've put in over twenty thousand swabs since the inception this year. But these are just the last, the three weeks just after returning from the holidays. And you can see that we were kind of the peak of this Omicron variant, where we had eighty-nine pools identified as positive. On January fourth, we had eighty-nine positive pools on the eleventh. And then we had seventy-five positive pools on the eighteenth. The state did change the way that they were looking at individual results. So it was difficult for us to identify how many actual individuals were being tested through the PCR testing. So that's been rectified. And that's why in, on the one eighteen slide, we do actually have that data there. So out of seventy-five positive pools, the, the pool testing identified ninety-four positive individuals. And this does not include the amount of point of care testing that the nurses are doing in their buildings as well, which would be for somebody who comes in and says, I don't feel well. Or for test and stay for a student or for a staff member who was considered a close contact. So these are the numbers for just the, the routine COVID checks. So again, you can see that we tested over the, an average over those three weeks, seventeen hundred swabs each week. We had eighty-four positive pools. So we are running at about almost twenty-two and a half percent average positive pools. With a five percent, fortunately, that only captures that one week, but a five percent total percent in, positive for individuals. Moving on to the last
Craig, I, Craig, I have something to say. What's missing for me is information on problems, you know, people that have died. People that have been hospitalized. People that have been hospitalized, people that have suffered damage, either temporary or or estimated long-range damage. I would like to see that kind of information also presented.
I, I, I don't know, I mean statistically statewide or nationally or
I'm speaking for Pittsburgh, local, local, you know, rule. And and whether or not it's done statewide or in any other area or city, I would like to see it in our city. So we have a complete picture of the effects, good and bad of, of all of what we've been doing the last two years. Just that you, just as you see it in the mental program, obviously things are, you know, there will be good and bad effects and it's, and it has not been included.
I, I think, Rosemary, if I could add, I think what you're asking would be, would be more would be more in the wheelhouse of the, of the Board of Health would be Steve Curry.
Well, yeah, well, frequently Steve presents things to our, our group and I'd like to see him and everybody included, yeah.
Why don't you submit, give me the, the actual data that you're looking for and I'll make sure that he takes an effort to get that for you.
Okay, I'll get that to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. And this, this just represents the last two weeks of our pool testing. You can see that the numbers have dropped. We've gone from eighty-nine positive pools down to thirty-seven and thirty-one. So we are seeing a decline in the positive rate for our pools across the district, which is great news. And then the positive positivity rate for students and staff within those pools is down from that five point one percent to, to two points that two point one and two point nine percent. So we actually, the average went up of the amount of people that we tested. The good news is that is the, the average positivity rate went down fifty-nine percent. And we hope that it will continue to do so. The average positivity rate for individuals went down. So all good news, I, I, but I do want to bring note to looking at positive pools at thirty-seven and thirty-one. All of last year and through October, November of this year, we were seeing three pools a week, five pools a week. When we got to eleven pools, we were getting nervous. So you know, just to put that in perspective, it's great that we are down from the eighty-nine and ninety positive pools that we were seeing post-holidays. But still cause for concern in mitigation strategies to stay in place with thirty-seven, thirty-three pools. Still positive at this point. So, you know, it'll be interesting to look at the data over the next couple of weeks and see if that still continues to trend down. So one of the things that the state has implemented is a new at-home antigen testing program, which we will be using to supplement our pool testing. So we're trying to encourage parents not to do one or the other, but to continue to consent to do the pool testing and do the at-home antigen testing, testing as well. So because we opted into this as a district, our students and our staff will receive one box or two tests of antigen test to bring home and test at home once a week. And they'll be doing that on Thursdays. We did our first week is this week for, for staff. Our staff will be using their at-home tests this Thursday. And our students will be receiving their tests. They should have started receiving them today and tomorrow, and they'll be using them for next week. So we'll continue to get these shipments of tests to be sent out to staff and to students. The caveat to that is this is an opt-in program. So parents do have to opt their children in and staff have to opt in as well. These are not tests that will be delivered to everybody in the district. We do have to have, and we've sent out Google forms in multiple languages for our families to opt their, their child into this at-home testing so that they can receive it. The nice thing about this is it has allowed us to do two things. One, eliminate the test and stay program because we're providing the test for people to do at home, which was really uh, several additional layers for our school nurses that would have potentially twenty or thirty folks that they would have to test in their offices every morning. At this point, they can receive those tests, bring them home and then just notify us. And, and we do have an electronic form that they can use to notify us. So that we, we are eliminating the test and stay, which will provide our nurses the opportunity to do more of the job that they were, they are doing regularly. And then the second part of that is the contact trace, tracing. So we don't have to do the amount of follow-up because the, those who are identified as potential close contacts will have the at-home antigen testing to do. So it's kind of a statistically prudent program from the state to say, if we, if you give out, out these at-home tests and we can get as many staff members and students to opt in, then we can eliminate some of the other burdensome responsibilities that our nurses are doing in their in their offices around contact tracing and having to test so many students and staff every day. So that's new. It's just getting rolled out. We, like I said, we had our first shipment last week. It'll be used by the staff this week. And then the students will be doing their first round of at-home testing starting next week. And then this is just a slide that Mary Alexandra sends out to staff and into the community each week. Shows where our positivity rates are, where our vaccine rates are, vaccination rates are, and then opportunities for our community to go out and, and get vaccinated. And again, I, I will share this presentation out with the committee and with the community. Questions?
Okay, so there being no questions. We'll continue with the agenda. Craig, the donations, no donations tonight?
So we have no donations tonight. We have two grants to be accepted. I'm sorry, two, two grants to be submitted first. That's a summer food service program expansion grant. It's up to eleven thousand. It's to increase participation in the summer food service program by serving more children per day and increasing total meals that we can serve. And creating new additional sites that so that we can reach more families. The second grant to be submitted. It's a North Central Mass grant. It's a grant that ranges two to ten thousand dollars. And the funding would provide high school students to promote youth empowerment in relationships, racial equality and social justice. So those are two grants to be submitted.
And that's the Community Foundation of North Central Mass.
And then we have two, two grants to be accepted. One is the math acceleration grant for thirty thousand dollars. That would be Rhinegold Elementary School, and that's to support implementation of math-focused acceleration academies during February and April vacation. And again, that was thirty thousand dollars. And the second one is the, an increased comprehensive school health services grant. It was increased to two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's funding to support districts that need additional direct care nursing staff to reach students, safe students and nursing ratios. Funds may also be used to support direct services, clinical providers, management and support staff. So that's a, actually an increase to a grant that we already have.
Okay, I think that wraps up the, the budget items and
I would, I would, I would like to ask a question lest I fail. The one grant there that you mentioned, the second one, could you say that again, Craig? The, you said there were two grants together and one was for racial equity and what?
Uh, that is, it's for the high school and it would promote youth empowerment and relations, racial equality and social justice.
Let me, let me elaborate on that because I'm, I'm working on that with Jeremy. So we've been working with a leadership development firm and coach at the high school and central office. And this particular person has done studies of school teachers and is also an urban district in another state. And what this grant is really for is to provide some, it would be opt-in testing to compare students' values to teacher values. To make sure that where students are at. So that actually students and teachers understand each other better to create a more positive learning environment. So the North Central Mass Community Foundation has created a grant fund for, you know, racial and social justice. Really focusing on, you know, diversity, belonging, inclusion, equity initiatives. And this is another way to approach that in terms of having better understanding of our students and between our students and teachers. So that's what that grant is for, that grant application.
Does that have, and just to use a common term, does that have anything to do with critical race theory?
It does not have anything to do with critical race theory.
Could you explain the difference?
Could I explain the difference? Yes, this, this is
Because some of the words are the same and that's why
Well, they, they I, I am not going to say if they are the same or are not the same. Critical race theory is a course, study of education at either graduate schools or law schools, looking at systemic reasons for inequities. This is not that. This is looking at how we can help our students better understand them so that when we're going through and emerging from a pandemic, that we can help them social, emotionally, mental health, academically, understanding their values to become better students and lifelong learners. So this is, that's what that is.
Okay. And, and just from, from what you said, you, you're testing or exploring or seeking to find out the students' values at whatever age they are. And are you also seeking to find out from the teachers or?
It, it would be, yes. So the, this, the purpose would be for Pittsburgh High School students and staff.
Because Pittsburgh High School definitely has some values as, as given by, you know, as you see by their logo that they're, they're teaching to the children. So I, I hope that you just seen where the kids are, just like you would with reading or math or skills or development of, of values. Am I correct? I, I don't want to see what I'm trying to say is I don't think a child's values are developed, they come to learn them from, from the education that we give them. I don't know if I'm wording myself correctly, but I think you get the gist.
No, I, I get the gist. It, it's basically a, a, I don't want to say it's a standardized assessment tool that has a variety of categories. And it would be looking to see what the gaps in those categories are between the instructional staff and the students.
That sounds good. Just that phrase sounds good or that sentence.
Um, can I ask one little question? It has nothing to do with that. What is the name of the mathematics intervention program? I'm not sure if it's technology-based intervention program that we are applying for that costs thirty thousand dollars? What's the name of that program?
So that's actually an implementation grant for Rhinegold to roll out math acceleration. And I believe, and John, you can confirm this, that they would be using their own math curriculum to do this work.
Yeah, actually, we're using Eureka Math. Eureka Math, Dr. Knight, so for a week-long kind of accelerated intervention for students at Rhinegold. So they'll be in school during the week of actually February vacation, getting direct instruction on math using Eureka Math.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Mr. Mayor, ready for the action items?
Yes. We'll take each one individually. Is that acceptable, everyone?
Yes.
All right, action item twenty-two dash one two six. Do I have a motion to accept?
Can you make a motion to accept?
Can you read it?
Yes.
Can you read it, please? No.
Sorry?
Can you please read it? I don't have my, my paper from
All right, twenty-two dash one twenty-six, approve the superintendent's recommendation to submit the following grant titled Summer Food Service Program up to eleven thousand five hundred. North Central Massachusetts Grants range from two to ten thousand.
Yes.
That's the food service program one, right?
Yes.
So a motion was made and seconded, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Both hands? It is unanimous. Thank you. Action item twenty-two dash one twenty-seven, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the following grant titled Math Acceleration Grant, thirty thousand dollars. Comprehensive School Health Services Grant, increased funding, a hundred thousand new, FY twenty-two amount of two sixty-five, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Questions?
Move to approve?
Motion made to, to approve and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Move hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Twenty-two dash one twenty-eight. Approve the crossing guide hourly rates to match the state's minimum wage and to be adjusted accordingly as the Massachusetts minimum wage increases. Questions?
Motion to accept.
Motion made to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Twenty-two dash one twenty-nine, approve the memorandum of agreement between SEIU Local Eight 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 Nutrition Service Employees and the Pittsburgh School Committee beginning July one, twenty twenty-one through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Twenty-two dash one thirty, approve the memorandum of agreement between Pittsburgh Administrators Association Unit B and the Pittsburgh School Committee beginning July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve. Do I hear a second? Motion made in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Twenty-two dash one thirty-one, approve the memorandum of agreement between the Pittsburgh Education Association for the Para Educators and the Pittsburgh School Committee that expired on June thirty of twenty twenty-one, become effectively, excuse me, become effective retroactively from July one, twenty twenty-one and shall be in effect until June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded?
Second.
Second to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show of hands. Thank you. Twenty-two dash one thirty-two. Approve the memorandum of agreement between Pittsburgh Education Association Secretaries and Clerks that expired on June thirty, twenty twenty-one, becoming effective retroactively from July one, twenty-one and shall be in effect until June thirty of twenty twenty-four.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Twenty-two dash one three-three, approve the agreement between the Pittsburgh Education Association Para-Professional for Building Safety Monitor and the Pittsburgh School Committee beginning twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four.
Motion to accept.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Done. Twenty-two dash one thirty-four, approve the agreement between the Pittsburgh Education Association Teachers Sub-Coverage All Grades and the Pittsburgh School Committee beginning twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Twenty-two dash one three-five. Approve the Contract Amendment between Superintendent Schools, the Pittsburgh School Committee from July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to approve. All in favor?
Roll call vote, Mr. Man.
Roll call vote, right. Ms. Greenlee, would you perform a roll call for us, please?
Yes, sir. Uh Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Neutral.
Four yes, one no?
Uh my my vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor Di Natale.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. So sorry.
It's all right.
Five yes, one no.
All right, I I just want to clarify. I believe Dr. Knight wanted to abstain.
Yes.
Oh, abstain. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Um.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh we are adjourned. That's my gavel. Okay. Thanks, everyone.